...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two, action on minutes.
One second.
Questions? All those in favor? Post. Thank you. Adjustments to be agenda number three.
Alright, so I'm gonna let the code officer take this one, but in short, he's got an application for the installation of a holding tank on memory lane. Do you mind giving an overview of what this is and why it's in front of the board?
Yep, so it's actually the applicant is Sean Wyman. He's here today, and I'm sure the board may not see these very frequently. The main reason why you have to sign it is because in the shoreline zone, anytime there's a septic system, a holding tank being installed, if we have an ordinance, I can issue it. If we don't have an ordinance, you being the municipal officers are required to sign it. Well, if you so choose. That's the only option that I have in order to issue it is after you sign it.
So can you talk to us and tell us about the requirements and the ordinance for having an RV motorhome, et cetera, on a lot, the required limit?
Yep, so because he has to have a holding tank because he doesn't have the 20,000 square feet required for a septic system for the field and the tank. The RV has been grandfathered in this location. They have power set up. It actually had an RV there in the past, and I had instructed the owner that if it's gonna be present in shoreline zone for longer than six months, it has to have some kind of a septic system. The site evaluator that issued this has done the science behind it, the soil tests, and found the best placement for it. And the only hurdle now is just getting approval through the select board, and then I can then issue it. I believe it comes with a variance that I can issue. I don't have to send it to the state, so.
So it is there for the entire year? It's never moved? It's there permanently?
This will allow it to stay, exactly. Yeah.
So is the RV registered?
Yes, it's registered in Oxford, actually.
Okay, as an RV. So you pay taxes on it through, by it being registered, but you don't pay taxes on it as a permanent structure on the land, as personal property?
Uh, no, yeah, no, till this is taken care of, and then if it's insured, then I would have to go when I read, I did something about that.
Okay.
Wait, do you look at the tax effects?
Well, it's a conventional holding tank made of concrete. It'll come with an alarm. He has to actually, once this is signed and approved, he has to register it with the Registry of Deeds. He has to get notarized through the clerks, so it's very forthcoming, you know, upfront. Yeah.
Has it got requirements? It's gotta be emptied once a year, or whatever?
Yep. There's a, I think even on that form, you'll see it actually has pumping requirements, and above where you'll sign, you'll see Dire Septic has the agreement there. They've signed and dated that, and they'll be monitoring it. And because there's power on the site, the alarm will be, something that will be forever as long as the power is there, so.
Any further discussion? All those approved? Floyd made the motion. Dana second. It's approved.
Thank you.
This is the signature case.
I believe there's only three lines. You might have to make room for two.
Yep. Can you see when that comes off the end? Do you just wanna grab it so that you have that?
Yep, I'll take it right off your hand.
You're welcome. Item number four, private comments. If you wish to speak, please state your name and the town that you are from for the record, please. No public comments. Number five, business item. Five point one, audit discussion, fund balance policy and reserve account.
Alright, so as the board knows, we've had a little bit of trouble in regards to being able to get the auditor in here. He's been, his firm's been working on getting the audit completed. He's doing so, it's just, it's been a scheduling issue. One of the things that's held up for us, however, is the, getting the actual unassigned or undesigned fund balance for the year. So we finally have that nailed down, and the, he's confirmed for me that the unassigned fund balance is $2,339,760. So as the board is familiar, that amount, we have the fund balance policy reserve, and the fund balance policy, which states that anything, we, the town, you know, the town selectmen have to maintain the fund balance, undesigned fund balance, no less than seven percent and no more than 12 percent. So if you were to do our, the transfer that we usually do every year, which is everything over 12 percent, that would be $1.2 million that could be transferred to the 9701 Fund Balance Policy Reserve. So what I've done here is I've included for the board a copy of the calculation sheet that we do every year, which shows exactly what I'm talking about as far as the amount and the calculation that was made. And if we were to transfer the 1.2 million, that would leave a remaining undesigned fund balance of $1,92,000. And that would then make our 9701 account balance of 2 million, or 2.5 million. So my request to the board of selectmen is, if you're comfortable and prepared to make that transfer, I would recommend that we do that. I've also included the fund balance policy in there for your reference if you'd like it as well.
Where would we transfer the fund?
What's that?
I said, where would we transfer the fund?
At the 12 percent.
I mean, that's what we've done in the past, right? I mean, why would, is there something else I don't know?
No, no, no. You can do seven or 12, or anywhere in between. I just, my personal opinion, I like the idea of only doing over 12 percent.
Use a bigger button.
Well, exactly, so.
Any questions? Just include the amount in the motion. So that's part of the record. All those in favor? Post. Thank you. Item 5.2, fiscal year '23, 2024, capital improvement plan continued.
Alright, so this is a continuation also, not only of the capital improvement plan, but the discussion that we just concluded. So in your packets, you're gonna find a copy of, I tried to clean it up a little bit. This is a spreadsheet that shows all of the capital requests for this year that have come from the department heads. And the total of all of these is $1.3 million. Not all of these are being pushed as a town meeting item, or excuse me, as a fund balance item. What I've tried to do here is, I also put together a spreadsheet that shows all of these and my funding recommendations. Given the transfer we just made, I have recommended that a majority of these, with the exception of wastewater treatment facility reserves and the cemetery reserves, I've recommended on here to the board that the rest of them come from the 9701 account. With this recommendation that I'm putting in front of you, it's kinda twofold. One of the reasons is that before we start the budget process, we need to know what projects we have potential funding for. Because what we don't have funding for needs to go forward to, through the budget process and the town meeting. Normally, we're not this far delayed. It's just the challenge we had with the audit piece. If the board chooses to make the transfers I've outlined here, and I'm glad to read them aloud if that's what you would like, all of them, but if the board chooses to make these transfers, I am not sitting here tonight asking for permission to spend this money. I'm just asking for permission to move it from the 9701 Fund Balance Policy Account into each individual reserve account. And when we're ready, you know, for instance, when Paul's ready to, you know, purchase some of the equipment, he'll put it out to bid. We'll come in front of the board, and you folks will, you know, be able to approve or disapprove of the, you know, whatever the bid is. So just asking to set the money aside, not looking for permission to spend it tonight. So.
Does Rob think that we can get away with a shim and overlay of number six road?
Yep, that's what he's working on right now. He says that a shim and overlay should be able to, he just sent me an email to confirm, it should be able to buy us six to seven years before we need to readdress that road, in his opinion.
And he thinks that would save the same for the Winnebago Road?
That's what he's telling me.
I'm thinking that ain't gonna happen. Not gonna get you six to seven years. Probably on either road, but.
The Winnebago Road, I think that needs to be done, just like we've done every other road. And I thought the Winnebago section would be the same.
He did give us an estimate on both those roads to do a complete reconstruction, which I have, I brought with me tonight. I think the reason that they were looking at a shim and overlay is a considerable difference in the cost. I don't support shim and overlays for roads like that, especially in the condition that they're in.
In six years, you're gonna be back and you have to redo the whole road again. I mean, what, why is the sense it's been a couple hundred thousand dollars? We could spend four to five hundred thousand to get it done.
And that's the reason I asked, to see what his updated cost would be to do the complete reconstruction versus what he's gonna give us for a shim and overlay, and then make a decision at that point.
I mean.
It will cost.
I'm not a road engineer, but the roads are bad.
Yeah, they are bad.
I think there are sections of the Winnebago, especially the lower end, from like the railroad tracks up to where we cut down.
Maybe that, yeah.
I think you could do an overlay there, but I think from there up to the top of the hill.
And, and, sorry, and number six road, I just think, in some time, it would be fine, but if you're gonna do it, you've got that two-foot wide gully in the middle of the road.
You've been over it lately?
Last night.
I just, I think that would be a waste on the road, you know, something.
And in putting aside the 400,000, that would come out of the fund balance that we just talked about. What we may end up doing if we do the complete reconstruction is budgeting the difference.
What was, to do it right, what was the number?
430,000 for the Winnebago Road.
I think I've got a reading.
So Winnebago Road, you're looking at for a shim and overlay, the 260, and for total, total, you know, workup, you're looking at 587,000. In number six road, you're looking at 282,000 versus shim and overlay, you're looking at 124.
I know, I think that would be a waste of 300,000.
I understand the price and everything else are going, I'm concerned with you, but we do it, we do it right.
So in setting the money aside, again, you're not telling, you're not giving me direction to go and start this tomorrow. If you're setting the money aside, and the board chooses, just they wanna reconstruct one road, and that's certainly whatever it is that you folks wanna proceed with. I just put together my thoughts, if you will.
You think that we could do the Winnebago Road and then pull off the end of number six road? What's the thoughts of that? Winnebago Road has a lot more traffic than number six road. I understand that six, number six road is a shortcut to South Bay.
Want me to have him put together a bid proposal for that?
Yeah.
What do you guys think? I think something needs to be done with the, we go up to the top of the hill on the six road and down, because that stretch between the valley to the east Austin road, as much as I hate to do it, but to put it off another year, if you just maybe.
Well, the top of the road, and then going down into the Alvin coming up, and going out. Maybe you could, you could see that, know where it is, maybe we can get a price on that.
Section, that section?
That section, would you like? That's where it's all full, it's all, not even there.
Okay.
But I think the Winnebago Road needs to be.
In reserve.
Are we looking for a vote on this capital project tonight?
I'm looking, I'm looking for a vote on transferring the funds to those designated reserve accounts, and then before anything is spent, coming back to you folks and asking permission to actually spend it. Because if we move that money there, then, then I won't be, won't be looking to the budget, budget process to fund, to fund those projects.
I understand that, but if we decide we're only gonna put $400,000 to road repairs on this, and then we decide we're gonna put another half million dollars on the budget to do those two roads the correct way, it might give me some reserve on how much we're gonna put in some of these other accounts, and maybe we put more into the road repairs and less into some of the other ones. That's my, what I'm thinking right now.
So we're not going to actually review the capital account tonight. It's gonna be a few meetings forward. So I think we need, I think we need to assess this list here and determine if we need to put more. I think we need to get the prices from Rob to do the complete reconstruction for both roads, see what it is, and then if we make the decision to go ahead and do both roads this year, then maybe what we need to do is look at where these other monies should be put. What is the, how important is it that these monies be transferred into these particular accounts tonight? The approval for that?
I don't know that, I don't know that it's overwhelmingly gonna be the end of the world if we don't transfer the monies into those accounts tonight. If the board is, if there's anything on this list that the board does not wanna see go through the fund balance as far as funding goes, if we can, if you can let me know that, I'm going to be updating the capital budget that's going in front of the budget committee in this process. So maybe that's something that, you know, for the next meeting, you folks could, could let me know. So that way, different purchases, we can make sure they all go through the correct process, that's all. Because there isn't any reason for it to go through the entire budget process if it can be funded by the 9701 account, so.
I agree that we can, I agree with the amount to transfer, but maybe not necessarily into the individual accounts on this list.
I would agree.
And the totals. That should be at another meeting after we get the totals for the road reconstruction.
Fair enough.
Okay.
And want to make that motion?
Yes, that.
Make that motion?
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Is that something you folks would like at the next selectmen's meeting, or when would be a good time for that?
KRT will be here at the next selectmen's meeting, or the next budget meeting.
No, I'm good now. I will be here. Okay, so you can lay back on the sixteen.
Okay. Thank you.
Number six, board of selectmen and budget committee joint budget session, fiscal year '23, '24, budget review with the manager.
Alright. Well, first of all, I'm very excited. Now the budget season is here, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna kinda give the, I like to call it the 30,000-foot overview. This is the first time a lot of folks in this room are actually seeing this budget. We've got a couple of new folks that are on the budget committee this year, so welcome. And generally, what I'd like to do is, the first time you see the budget, I just like to run through what some of the major changes are, and some of the major things that you're gonna see, and then get into the meat and potatoes when we actually do the individual, you know, budget department meetings. So the first part, which everybody is waiting for, is that the total proposed budget this year for municipal operations is $5,672,862. Last year, last year's budget was 5.3 million, so it's an increase of $289,946. So a special note that I would like to make is you'll note that when you open your book, you see that there's two cover sheets. The first one is specific to maintaining services to the exact level that we have right now, as far as fire and police and so forth. There was a proposal made by the fire chief to adding extra personnel to the weekends, and there was a proposal made by the police chief to add an additional police officer. If we were to do both of those things, as well as to accept all of the third-party requests that were submitted, the increase would actually be a $430,000 increase to the overall municipal budget. So as we get into the meat and potatoes of this, we'll discuss those further. I felt it was important for the personnel, for the police and fire especially, that the board of selectmen and the budget committee have an opportunity to discuss those things. The individual department heads will be here and prepared to, to review that as well. But face value, when we start looking at the individual departments, you're gonna see an increase to the police department line of about 66,000. That's based on, we just negotiated the collective bargaining agreements that got agreed upon. We brought the wages up to a competitive, competitive level, so the salaries are one thing that you see in there as part of that. And then you also see that there's some other contractual issues in there as well that bring that price up or cost up. The highway department sees an increase of 39,800. Again, we just went through a contract negotiation with that as well, but it's not just salary, it's also the cost of salt has gone up significantly. The fire department, again, it's not, you know, it's up by 71,000. That's a combination of salary and equipment costs. Public safety building is up by 21,000. That's public safety buildings, excuse me, and that's a combination of fuel costs and overall maintenance. Recreation, you see an increase of 40,000. As you know, we hired a new recreation director. The employee, the employee is taking advantage of benefits that past employees did not, so that's been an increase, as well as the fact that fuel oil costs. We see an increase for the transfer station, transfer recycling, and that is the tipping and hauling fees. $32,000 an overall increase, but tipping and hauling fees have gotten, gotten crazy. Sewer department, it's $34,000 of an increase, and that's just general operating costs. Everything from the cost of chemicals and other supplies and equipment have gone up. The municipal line, which as you know, has a combination of the third-party requests, the library and our liability insurances. So there's a couple of notes. It's up by $44,000, but one of the, one of the big bumps that we're seeing there is the library's request has gone from there, I believe it was 40,000 last year, it's gone up to $75,000 this year. Our insurance, liability insurance has, our current provider has gone from about $75,000 for the, or excuse me, $78,000 for the year, up to 109, or 104,000, which is a pretty significant increase. I've been in negotiations with Main Municipal, I have another meeting with them tomorrow, and they're looking to offer us a policy that's frankly better for 89,000, so giving that pretty serious consideration. And also, you have about seven, a few thousand dollars of third-party requests as well. The debt has gone down by 66,000, and the reason for that is we've had some debt that's, you know, that has expired, but also then we added the debt for the nice building that we're sitting in now. So those are your, you know, your off-the-top major increases that equal up to that 289,946. Projecting a little bit higher of a revenue of 3.74 million this year. We are in the process of a revale. I wanted to remind folks, so I know in talking to KRT that they are capturing a lot, a lot of new value that there wasn't being seen before, which is pretty exciting. And then the last couple of comments that I wanted to make when we get into these individual departments is that for salary lines, minimum wage has gone up to 1380 an hour, which is up from 1275. That's more than a dollar, so that's effective things. And COLA this year is 8.9. I put in our, I use the COLA amount of 5% for all non-union employees. So that kinda gives us the 30,000-foot rundown, and if the board is, if the boards are comfortable with it, my plan is to, on the next meeting, which would be March 9th, starting at 5:00 PM, we would do the fire EMS, public safety, and the recreation department budgets. I'm certainly not opposed to long nights. If the board wants to add more budgets on there and be here till the wee hours of the morning, I'm happy to do that as well. So whatever it is that folks wanna do, but that's what I have for you tonight.
Does anyone have any questions of the manager? Okay, so that would be a first line.
Yes, ma'am. No, nobody threw anything at me, so thank you.
You say yet?
Yeah.
They still got some reading.
Number seven, department head reports. Do we have any?
I didn't include a department head because I thought we were gonna be here a lot longer than that.
Okay. Number eight, town managers report.
So 85 Pleasant Street closed on February 24th. It no longer belongs to the town of Oxford, so pretty excited about that. And I also wanted to let you folks know that Rob Prue is starting on And I also wanted to let you folks know that Rob Prue is starting on the RFPs that we were talking about earlier. I had told him shim and overlay, but I'll have him, you know, rework that to the reconstruction, I can reach out to him for that. I also have Rob Prue preparing an estimate to pave the recreation center parking lot, that's something that was brought to my attention the other day, that is starting to get a little bit squishy over there, so he's gonna put an estimate together for that. And then we've sold a couple of lots on Park Road, as you guys are aware, so I did task Rob Prue, again, the engineer, to put together just a, a construction estimate for installing power, water, and, and paving that road, it doesn't mean you have to do anything with it, just to see how much it would cost to actually do one or all of those things as we sell those lots. Lastly, the mowing RFP has been put out for the ball fields, and I'm still working on finishing up and updating the RFP for the pottle field bathroom that we discussed the other week. And then lastly, the appeals board has an opening now, if we know of anybody that would be interested.
Questions for the manager? Okay. Number nine, selectmen's.
Maybe I missed it somewhere along the way, but the money that came from the pedal government, the four hundred and some one thousand, what did we use that for?
The ARBA funds?
Yeah.
Yep, so we, that money when it came in, some of it was used for broadband expansion, I believe it was a hundred and thirty-ish, if I remember correctly, and then the remaining funds were used to make up revenue loss. So therefore, it went to the unassigned or undesigned fund balance, it's revenue loss.
So that's included in this?
Any other questions? Number ten, signed warrants, sixty-eight, sixty-nine, seventy-seven, seventy-two.
While you guys are signing those, I just wanted to throw out there, I think the highway department's been doing a great job with these roads, been out working a lot of long hours, it's been appreciated.
Adam, do you, do you predict any new budgets? Needings, need supplemental just because of the cost of, for this year, or?
Need supplemental.
Do you think they're gonna make it on that budget perhaps, just because of cost of, I know we planned it high for the fuel, but I know supplies are like through the roof on stuff, so.
I know that because of some payroll expenses here and there, we're gonna be running it close, I think that's something that, when we finish, frankly, I figured when we start the final quarter of fiscal year, I was gonna be sitting down and, and just looking at that, so, 'cause I know that this one department, take a look, be pretty close on the payroll lines for this.
If I did, just the cost of, like, anything today, it's probably more than what we budgeted, so I just curious as to.
One of the things that we're kinda having is, I don't wanna call it a bonus, but we budgeted pretty high for fuel last year, but then we haven't been paying that high of a price for fuel, so it is helping, you know, some of balance that out.
Make a motion, make sign, word, sixty-eight, sixty-nine, seventy-seven, seventy-two. Robert.
Item number eleven, adjournment.
Thank you guys for coming tonight.
Heard here about your mom?
Yeah.
Okay. How's Brad doing?